Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at our April 16 meeting. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case for some reason we need to use them. And now join me as we restate our loyalty to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is an application Berger and Bilzok. They're seeking site plan waiver. The applicant's here tonight. Do you mind coming on up? And speak into the microphone and just state your name for the record, please.
John Hummel.
You're the builder?
Could you please sit down and speak into the microphone? And restate your name, please.
John Hummel.
Thank you, Mr. Hummel. We usually do sort of routine waivers for residentials that are in the SASS, except that this is actually visible from the river, which is why the SASS was created. So I at least had a couple of questions for you. There were two sets of plans submitted. One is for the actual site plan, I guess I'll call it, that shows, if you look over the top, the rear elevation that faces the river. That's what it looks like? Up at the corner there?
That's correct.
Or at the top? The house looks different now.
It's changed a little bit, yeah, since that was the, that was the module in elevation.
Okay.
So they've made some final changes. You should have that on the...
We don't have it on that one, but on the next one, the erosion sediment control plan.
Correct.
It looks as though they've, there's been a, some sort of dormer added up at the top.
That's correct, shed dormer.
And there's also now a walkout basement shown.
Correct.
The siding on the house is going to be vinyl, so it'll look like the rest of the neighborhood. But the basement, is that just going to be concrete or cinder block, or?
They're going to do a stucco finish on the exterior.
That's what I wanted to hear. Okay. Any questions otherwise from the board?
I personally haven't seen any of the elevations.
Oh.
Did I not, I didn't see them. I don't think, I'm not sure if my colleagues have seen any of these. Is that possible?
Yes, they were not included because there was only one plan submitted.
Right, so I don't think any of us have actually seen this.
Take a look. I should also add that Ms. Moss, who's not here tonight, our zoning administrator, has informed me that they already have their erosion and sediment control permit.
They've already sent them.
Right, that it's been reviewed. And that she didn't, she's made the recommendation for the waiver because they've gone through the process. But, Mr. Sigmund, would you pass along that other shorter sheet? You can see the front of the house, too, if you'd like. That's the front. And rear and left, you see the changes they put in that dormer thing. And this didn't show that there was going to be the basement.
It does not look like a shed.
No. No. Any other questions? Who has this application? Who has this file?
I have it.
Thank you.
You ready?
Mm-hmm.
Site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, April 16th, resolution 14-11. Whereas, 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 whereas thou therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Berger and Bilzok regarding the specific request as received April 10th, 2014, and in the building permit application file for this project.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? If you carry unanimously, you'll get your building permit shortly.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. And please tell the owners welcome to the neighborhood. We live down there. Next item on the agenda is a pre-application meeting for Francaise. The applicants are seeking a lot line revision in the Greenbelt District. And I believe Mr. Sears is it?
Yes.
Is here? Just please state your name again for the record.
Hi, I'm Anson Sears.
And do you want to describe what you, what you want us to do, or what you're looking to do?
Yeah.
You should probably take a seat as well, because it's, we're recorded on camera, or on TV, I should say. And they can't hear you if you don't speak into the microphone.
Okay. I would like to change the lot line on 120 and 124. So we have more of a backyard. We're not looking to build there or anything. It's just a really tight lot on 120.
And it's my understanding that the house burned? Your house burned, is that right?
Yeah, it's been repaired since.
Oh, good. So it didn't get burnt down entirely or anything?
No, not entirely.
Okay. So the first thing is, is you'll need to fill out a new EAF. The part two, which is here on down, is filled out by the board, not the applicant. And I believe Mr. Francaise, they signed the final sheet, and that's me to sign. So we'll need a new one for you to fill out. And you can fill out the part one section just the way it was. But parts two and three, we do. It's illegal, in other words, for you to do it. Then, I believe Ms. Moss may have discussed this with you, but you're in the Greenbelt. And under our code, we don't have anything that specifies something separate for lot line revisions from minor subdivisions. So, yes. So this would be a minor subdivision, which means in the Greenbelt that you'd have to set aside 30% permanent open space of the parcel. Which would mean hiring a lawyer, getting a survey, and doing a deed restriction on that 30% parcel. I don't know if Ms. Moss told you, but I recently proposed a change in the law to the town board. And they've circulated a draft law that we're going to be discussing later on tonight, that for, just in cases like yours, for lot line revisions where there's no new housing lot, you won't have to put aside the 30%. So my question to you is, is do you want us to start proceeding with this application and review? And then try to slow it down until the town law is adopted, assuming they're going to adopt it?
Yeah, that would, that would be great, if we could do that.
I believe we can. I'm looking at Ms. Paula Doherty.
Slow it down?
Slow it down.
At this point, they haven't even applied, so...
No, actually, I found out today, this says pre-application meeting, but they've filled out an application and they paid escrow and an application fee.
Oh, okay, so they have applied.
Yes. So they have applied. So what we would do at the next meeting is, I think, type the action once we have an EAF. And there'd be no referral, because county planning doesn't look at this. It's not creating any new, it's actually very simple.
You could set the public hearing for two months. At the next meeting, you could set it for two months off, so there's sufficient time for the town board to consider the test amendment.
Right. The way this works is, once the town board circulates the law to us, then we have three days in which to respond. We'll, I think, get a response more quickly to them. But then they have to hold a public hearing on the law itself. That's just, there's a sort of time constraint built in here. So it's probably going to take about two months. So we could set the public hearing tonight for two months in advance, if that's okay with you?
No, that's fine.
And in the interim, you'll need to get us in...
We can't set the public hearing until Seeker is completed.
That's true. What I should say is, we have to get the new EAF, get you on, then we'll set a public hearing. But in terms of Seeker, we need the EAF. Let me ask you a question, Victoria. Can we just tear off parts two and three and keep part one for the time being?
Yeah, I mean, you could just have Donna...
Copy it.
Copy it with that out, or X... Yeah. You can just have her copy this page with this crossed out, or white it out. And then we'll print off a new part two.
To fill out for ourselves. So we could get this on the agenda for the next, the first meeting in May.
Sure.
Conclude Seeker on it, and then set the public hearing for six weeks out. Do you have the town board time?
I mean, the one question I had, when I went through the file today, I didn't see anything from Mrs. Lee, Myrna Lee, the neighbor. And I don't know if there's been consent.
I believe...
Just not in my file.
This is Peter Francaise. He's the owner of 124.
Of Lee?
Yes.
I don't believe, I don't believe Lee is the...
There's something on one of these.
You just have a deed or something showing that you're the owner? Okay, so can you just submit something?
On my paper, it says, uh, three legacies.
Right, but we don't know that Mr. Francaise was the inheritor, the heir or assigned.
Right, it says Anna Myrna Lee, heir of Peter Francaise. I'm just looking for...
Myrna Lee, that was my mother.
Oh, Myrna, I'm sorry. I'm just looking for the letter's testamentary or something showing that you're authorized to allow us to proceed. So just within the next two weeks, if you give it to Donna, so I can take a look.
When did your mother pass away? A while back? That's what I thought. Do you still have a letter of testamentary or something? Or... Those aren't that easy to hang on to. Believe me, I know. I've been asked for them several times. So we will complete the EAF at the first meeting in May, so we'll put this on the agenda. We'll conclude Seeker. You can come if you want to, but it shouldn't be anything, any big issue. The question I have for the board is, the, what's shown doesn't really have existing conditions. Since they're not trying to do anything that's to build on, do you guys, are you guys comfortable with going ahead with just what you see right here?
Aye.
Okay.
As long as the newly created lots conform to our current zoning.
In that district, it's 2.5 acres per dwelling unit, so...
Right, and I guess I'm, I don't see any changes to like road frontage or anything like that.
No.
Just in the back.
Right.
So neither, the development potential of, neither lot has a change in development potential.
Correct. Correct.
Because they're both under five now, and they'll both stay under five.
In other words, they can't be further subdivided to create new lots. I think that area back there, if I'm familiar with it, has some wetlands, probably wet and rocky.
Yeah, definitely.
So this would save them from having to go through and try to delineate the wetlands or anything else, if we're comfortable. And I don't see any reason to do that, since it's just a minimal lot line revision. So, Mr. Sotero, any questions from you?
The only thing I saw, I was looking at the short form, EAF, and number three needs to be filled out. And then I think that nine, 10, and 11 should all be not applicable. So if those could be changed, because we're not, you know, the proposed action is not going to be...
There's no change whatsoever.
Water supply, you know, sewer, it's just, it should just be not applicable on nine, 10, and 11. And the boxes unchecked.
Right.
In my opinion.
No, no, no. I already have done in my notes, the question three has to be put in. And it's, that's actually pretty easy. It's on, the numbers are in the plan itself.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Ms. Paula Doherty, any questions, any issues?
No.
Let me start to my right. Mr. Mercidiano, any issue, anything you want to comment on here?
No, no questions.
Mr. Oliver?
Nope, no questions.
Ms. Dexter?
Nope.
No.
I'll have a quick one on number five. It may be the way it copied or something, but it looks like yes was checked and then NA was checked. I guess you wanted it to be NA, right?
Number five?
Number five, A.
No, this should be, is it proposed, is it prohibited by zoning regulations? The answer is yes. It is.
Right, that, not applicable.
NA should be crossed out?
Yeah, the answer should not be checked, right.
And that was all I had.
So the applicant will make those changes, or you're going to make those changes and...
We're not supposed to fill out the part one for you. Do you want to, can you, can you come in and fill out question number three?
Absolutely.
Here, you can have mine. I marked it up if you want.
There you go.
Can you just initial the changes?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll schedule this for the next agenda to do Seeker, and then we'll set the public hearing. A 7th. So if you want to come back from A 7th, you'll just see us take some quick action.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Here, you want to take this? This is a markup. I don't need it. All right, thanks.
The next item on the agenda is Whitman and Healy. The applicants are back. They were seeking site plan, lot line alteration, some other stuff. We can discuss local law. Proposed local law, number one. Has everyone had a chance to review the proposed law?
Yes.
Any comments?
It reeks of common sense.
Well said.
Thank you, Jan.
I have a question about, the idea is, if I, if I have it correct, is that 30% is going to be waived in the case of lot line revisions.
Lot line only, where there's no new building lot?
No new building lot. If that is correct, is it possible that one of the lots will concede some of its old 30% to the new division?
Well, first, the... That, let me, let me think about this. In the first place, the, you're, yes, I suppose they could. But we would, because it's a deed restriction, so it would apply to the deed itself, I mean, to the parcel.
Are you saying if there's a lot that has conserved open space?
They, both lots conserve 30%.
Already.
Already. And they're going to...
And one guy wants a bigger backyard.
And the other guy, and they've got enough acreage to do this. And the other guy says, great, I'll go ahead with it. Now, I'm going to give a chunk of my 30% to the next guy. So now I'm down to 20%, he's whatever he might be.
It's fine, because I think in that case, it would be fine and it would be consistent with the intent of the law. Because the land, once it's preserved, it's preserved. It doesn't matter who owns it.
Who owns it?
So the development potential's not changing. So if there's already a house and 30% was preserved, if they give that to the neighbors, the same amount of land is still preserved.
But where I saw this, and I was a little confused, supposing now we have my little example, I give it and the neighbor gets more open space, I have less. The neighbor can now build on that because...
Nope.
They can't.
Not if it's, not if it's already been conserved.
Not if it's already been conserved. So they do not have, even though now maybe they have 40% of their property open space, they can't say, oh, good, I'm going to go back to 30% and put up, good.
It's, it's because the deed restriction language, the deed restriction language is reviewed by our attorneys.
Okay.
And they have a sort of standard form that they like. But when we have a deed restriction, we've had others...
For personal.
Right. We've had others where there's also, it's possible for your open space, you're also allowed to deed it as a separate lot to a land conservancy. You can also just create as a separate lot. But we haven't really seen that because of ownership issues.
Right.
But you're, I mean, there is, there are ways for people to find loopholes. Let's say there's two 10-acre parcels.
Right.
And someone gives away five acres.
Okay.
And then they go to develop, so that the 30%, they have to conserve, is much less than it would have been if it was the full 10-acre lot. Because now their other lot is 20 acres, or whatever it is, 15, in that example. So that was a workaround for them, but that's...
It also means, other than the new, the new larger lot, if it came in for subdivision, would still have to have the 30%.
Right, when that one's developed in the future, deferring it.
In other words, you can defer it, but you can't really escape it, no matter what.
You can't escape it.
And I suppose people could do this. I mean, it's an awful lot to go through, just to try to...
Right, you can't legislate every, every action. The idea here is to allow people that are just, like in this case, they had built on their neighbor's land, to allow them to...
To do the swap without jumping through the hoops that, that a new construction is. And I understood that, but okay, so, okay, thank you. That's all.
No, no, it's a good question. It's one I hadn't thought, the law of unintended consequences.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion?
I had a question about fees.
Okay.
Would the town board also consider... The, no, not direct fees, but the application fees? Because, again, it's not really a subdivision, per se. It's a lot line revision. It's, it's a survey change. Would they also consider, again, I'm not quite sure if I can think this all the way through enough to say it should be less than a normal subdivision, but...
Well, it's not part of the law right now.
No.
You can make that part of your recommendation, that they reduce the application fee. Part of it, though, is that it's still reviewed as a subdivision. You still have the public hearing.
Right, there's still potential stormwater things that, right, or no, not stormwater, but...
There's no, it depends on if development's proposed or not.
Right.
If it's a vacant lot that's going to be developed, then you are going to be reviewing stormwater issues and driveway and grading profiles. If it's a case of two built houses already, then there's usually not much more to review.
Should, could that be, I'm just wondering, so what you've just described are a simple lot line revision, and then one that borders on a subdivision, almost.
Yeah, I thought this was only for simple.
I thought this was for like...
That's why this is key to only when there's no new building lot.
Yeah.
And the reason why I didn't go the next step and say, let's create a new section called lot line revisions only, was I felt like that might be getting into a bigger thing than what we wanted to right now. But you're right, it does, it could, we have an application...
Where there's a case where there's not two already built lots, it could border on a regular subdivision.
Right, you're, you'd probably be reviewing the same things as a regular subdivision. If, if the lot line adjustment was going to enable one lot to be developed in a new way, or to be developed at all.
Right, because, I mean, think of the situation where the lots, one is not big enough to, to build on. Say it's only like an acre or an acre and a half in, in the Greenbelt, and by altering the lot line, it now becomes buildable.
Right.
No, no, it's still buildable at one acre. Remember, it's average density.
No, no, we're talking individual lots here.
I know, but if there's already a lot created, it was created with the idea that it was buildable. We don't approve unbuildable lots.
If we have a lot that's a one acre in Greenbelt, you...
You can still, no, no, yes, you can have acres, you can have in a subdivision, a 10-acre lot and a half-acre lot, as long as the average is 1.2, for 1.25 acres.
I guess I'm talking about individual lots, not subdivision.
Well, there's an exception in our code. If your lot pre-exists, then it can be developed.
Right.
But with a single-family home, it doesn't mean it can be developed with a commercial entity.
Okay.
Right, so, right, so if you do a lot line adjustment of a one-acre lot where you need two in order to put up a mini mall.
Oh. No, I'm not really talking about that. I'm talking about residential.
Yeah, but the lots that were already approved, there was a subdivision done at the time, which meant that it was evaluated, is, are those lots buildable?
So even though it's non-conforming, it's a pre-approved...
Right, that's what I was saying. Yeah, right, 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 right. It's been a while since we've done subdivisions.
I know, I know.
Any other questions?
And this wouldn't apply where you're taking, if you're creating a new lot out of pieces of other lots?
Right, right.
Correct, because that's an unbuildable lot.
And that's explicit in here.
Right.
Okay.
The way, the way I had read it was that it would be strictly for the simple circumstances, where if you're trying to make a buildable lot, it wouldn't really fall into this, or would it?
No, if there's a buildable lot, if you're creating a lot where a new home can go onto, where there's going to be additional home, then it would, it would still be a minor subdivision. You'd be subject to the 30% if you're in waterfront or Greenbelt, either one.
Okay.
That was the follow-up. If that be the case, it follows that you can adjust the fees based on the same criteria you're using. For that, you could adjust the fees accordingly.
Thank you, yeah.
Because it's not complex, and you've already set the restrictions.
So what I'll do, what date did we receive this? April 8th? So it's due by May 8th. So if I get together a letter and have it ready for, at our next meeting, you can authorize me to send it, and I will, I was going to ask for a motion tonight to let me reply, but I think what I want to do is, is take a look at the fee schedule and maybe include that in the letter, making a recommendation, maybe for a different fee for a lot line revision.
Well, so, I mean, some recent ones to think about are Quick and DeHauske and Dalbo Viani. Some of those did become complex, and you're following the same process as a subdivision. So you would want to, if you're going to make this recommendation, you want to limit it.
Quick and DeHauske, that's true, you're right. Quick and DeHauske had issues, not because of the nature of the lot line, but other issues that were in there. And Dalbo and Viani became complicated because of the 30% open space.
Right, well, that's right.
If we eliminate that, then we obviate the complexity there in the first place.
Much simpler.
Yeah, so, but... Yeah, but I'll discuss this with you further, but...
Does, does, do the fees cover the public hearing notice?
Okay, so right now, your fees do cover the cost of public hearing notices? So that's still going to be required?
I don't think our fee for a minor subdivision is much, but I just want to take a look at it.
Yeah.
It's not in the top of my head of what the fee schedule is, because it's not in my copy of the zoning. So I'll take a look first, and then I'll have a letter for everybody.
If there's an inter reduction, then you can...
Yeah. I'll also discuss this with Warren, to, the town attorney, just to make sure he's in, agrees with it. Because it's up to the town board to change fees, not us. It would just be a recommendation. So I'll have a letter ready for us for the May 7th, and I'll circulate it. I promise well in advance, because we've got three weeks this time. Which means that we're now to the end of the line here, so come on up. Don't worry, we'll be, we'll be nice. Actually, I think this can be pretty quick, to be honest with you, Mr. Whitman. The reason why I say this is, you want to drop the garage, right?
We're going to...
Eliminate the garage. So what you'd be doing now is just seeking a lot line revision. And you're not in the Greenbelt, so you don't have to worry about your 30% open space. And since you're proposing, you'd be proposing no construction, right?
Not right now.
So that means there's no site plan. There's also no variance needed from the zoning board of appeals, which you sit on, because you're not doing any construction within the 100-foot buffer area.
Correct.
All you'd be doing is just a lot line revision.
Correct, we would like to take the existing garage down at this point and clean up the yard.
I don't believe that that requires any, any action from us.
Building department.
Building department might want a demolition permit, but that's all, so...
Do you need anything for the driveway?
Oh, Mr. Whitman, would you please use the microphone? Sorry, Hub. And further ragged on Michael Whitman. Yes, thank you. So I think, the last thing, all I had was that we needed to read, look at Seeker, and that the EAF, near dev information, like being referred to, to DC planning. But I think what we needed... what we need is a new EAF, a new short form.
What doesn't anymore?
It's automatically a type one action, because it's located next to an historic structure, but otherwise, we wouldn't be referring to anybody, because even though you're on a state highway, DC Planning does not look at subdivisions. So, if you can get us a new EAF, and also get a new plan that doesn't show the new garage on it, so it has something to approve that didn't, didn't have the garage...
There's a slim chance, there's a slim chance these don't have the garage on them. No, they do.
Okay.
We also need a zoning table, showing the area before, and the area after of both lots.
Okay.
And do you guys, I think that for us, I'm going to try to speak for the board for a moment, I'm not sure I need to see big sheets, if it'll save you money, you could do half-size on these for us. We would just need three full-size sets, and then the rest could be small.
Eleven by seventeen.
Yeah, yeah. What you're proposing is very minor now. I mean, it wasn't huge to begin with, but it...
Oh, correct.
Because of where you were, it created more complications.
Pete, you had asked for elevation shots before for the fill, for the...
Yeah, that was when you were going to do the garage and fill even more, right?
Because of the grading around it.
Yeah, the fill's going to remain the same, pretty much.
From what you have under the erosion control permit, right?
Yeah, yeah. I had those, I didn't know if you wanted those tonight.
Uh, sure, sure, we'll take a look at them.
There's two copies, unfortunately, we printed them in color.
And for the audience, Mr. Whitman is saying there are two copies printed in color.
The red.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two, two of the same?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I just need one.
File, attorney.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, right. No, I don't need, I don't need to have a full one. I normally do, but not on this one.
Yeah, this, this, this has nothing to do with what they're doing now.
So, just three full-size, the rest, 10, is it 10?
Three full-size with no shit nacho in the garage.
Right, and, and 10s...
10 small ones.
10 small ones for us.
Well, that's what I'm going to ask.
Go ahead.
My turn?
Yes.
Couple of other things that we'll need on the map, we'll need the standard planning board signature block on there, and we'll need this, oh, wait, it's up there, that's helped, oh, here it is, I'm sorry, up on the top, never mind, my bad. On the, on the 25-foot strip that's going to go from Healy to Whitman, is that, is that asphalt pad in there already?
No. Oh, in the, in the very beginning?
Yeah. What's that, what's that for?
It's kind of gravel and a little bit of asphalt. Can I come look at what you're...
No, you can't do that, sorry.
As long as you use the microfiling.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there is some asphalt and a lot of broken up gravel.
So, where do the Healy's have access, they have access somewhere else?
We're going to put it for them here in front of the house.
So, okay, so, all right, so they're going to have to get a new driveway permit?
Correct. Okay.
Yeah, so their driveway down would be shot on the...
Jeez.
Kirsten, Dad's getting yelled at again.
That's like a switch, huh?
She's watching now.
Daddy, daddy get collared out, huh?
Oh, eyes are probably this big.
You probably should lower the microphone a bit, too, just so we can, Mr. Sweet won't come back up.
People are usually telling me I'm too loud, just for the record.
All right, so they'll have to be, I guess we'll just put a note on the map that there'll have to be a driveway permit for...
Yeah, and they should...
Healy and for, you know, Whitman. Oh, that's true, we should show where, where the driveway's going to be for Healy.
Okay.
So, if you could just get together, you know, with Walt, and just, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure it's fine anywhere.
I, I did already, but we didn't...
All right, so if you could just show where, you know, the proposed one's going to be, and then, now, there isn't anything in that 25-foot, foot area, you know, where your septic system is? I mean, I don't, I don't know where your septic system...
Yeah.
Okay, so there's nothing you have to, you know, worry about in the 25-foot...
I don't think I... Please use the microphone.
I'm not going to talk after I stand up.
So, this is, so this is, so this is an updated map, or...
Correct, these, these show the driveway on the Healy's property.
Okay, but you got to take off...
Correct.
The garage on yours, okay. All right, so just go make sure that there's no issues with, you know, a septic system or anything that's on...
We know where the tank is, and it looks like the leak field doesn't come anywhere near there.
And Mr. Sotero and Ms. Paula Doherty, that means that we do have to circulate to Superintendent of Highways, right? Good, thank you. Keep it simple. Ms. Paula Doherty, do you have any comments?
No.
Anyone from the board?
All right, Mike, here, I want you...
No comment.
I don't need that.
Yeah, we'll...
No comment.
So, basically, they've simplified the application.
By far.
But we're coming back for a garage at some point in time.
Yep.
Don't say that, don't...
No.
We know you're not trained in secret the way we are, but one day, I'm going to give you a lesson permissible versus impermissible. And so, what we want to say is, at some point in the distant future, and you don't know when, you may be coming back in for a garage, may be coming back in for a garage.
No plans at this time.
Thank you.
There's no plans at this time for a garage.
Thank you.
For a garage.
Thank you.
Which is technically true, because there are no plans.
Okay, good, so we clarified that on the record, right? All right, good.
So, as soon as you can get us new, I think we can put this on the agenda for us to type the action, and set a public hearing. If we do this at the May 7th meeting, that's three weeks for you to get the information to us.
So, we need the new plan and the new EAF within the next...
Seven days.
The new plan is just not showing the garage, because the driveway's already on it.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And the new EAF.
I have my whiteout in the car. No.
That's about it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the May 7th meeting. It's nice to meet you, daughter, and neighbors. Any other business? Make it a motion to adjourn?
So, move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, media committee.
Barbie, you're in there. It's in there. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Easy, wait.